Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 19th, 2011. It's 9:00 AM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mary DiStefano is excused.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 5th council meeting and the April 12th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection.
Mayor, if I could add, it appears that mic buttons are on the off position. If everybody can make sure the red button is up.
Darn, they caught me.
No?
I don't think the buttons work, quite frankly.
Buttons don't work, okay.
How's that?
Yep, we're good. Sorry.
Button, button. Who's got the button? Agenda item number two, proclamation representing, recognizing April is Toastmasters Awareness Month. Mr. Lewis.
I think you've got some Toastmasters here. Got some toasts here. Proclamation. Whereas Toastmasters was founded by Ralph "Steve" Smetlitz in 1924 in California, the organization has helped more than four million people improve their communications and research skills, and whereas the Toastmasters mission is to provide mutually supportive and positive learning environment in which every member has the opportunity to develop communication and research skills, which in turn foster self-confidence and personal growth.
Cheap mics. Whereas the ability to speak in a clear and effective manner is a powerful and important skill, and this skill can help overcome barriers to effective performance in virtually every endeavor and line of work. And whereas by assisting in development of essential communication skills, Toastmaster International performs a valuable service for its members and those who carry the message of opportunity, initiative, good fellowship. And whereas boasting more than seven decades of outstanding achievement, Toastmaster International has grown in over 13,000 clubs and 260,000 members in 116 countries worldwide. And whereas this growth is a direct result of the enhanced knowledge and experience, Toastmaster International provides its members and clients. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast do hereby proclaim April as Toastmasters Awareness Month. Signed this 19th day of April, 2011, City of Palm Coast, John Nets, Mayor. Congratulations.
Who gets it?
On behalf of Toastmasters of Palm Coast, I'm thrilled to accept this proclamation. We meet every Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Government Services Building, third floor, and everyone is welcome, and we have a great time. And if you want to learn how to speak publicly, without fear, we're the people to see. Thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number three, presentation of the Northeast Florida Regional Council Regional Award for Excellence in Environmental Stewardship. I'd like to call upon Mr. Brian Teeple, Executive Director of Northeast Region.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Councilman Meeker.
Brian, I haven't seen you in years. You look great.
You do too, sir.
Well, thank you. I'll pay you later.
I knew the council went back when we both had not-so-a-blonde hair. For the record, my name is Brian Teeple. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Northeast Florida Regional Council, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning. Before I get to the matter at hand, I'd just like to give you a little background with regard to the Northeast Florida Regional Council. We were formed in 1977 by the county governments of Baker, Clay, Duval, Flagler, Nassau, Putnam, St. John's Counties through an interlocal agreement. Our board consists of two-thirds local elected officials, and the governor gets one-third of the appointments to our Board of Directors. Representing Flagler County, of course, is Mayor Nets, and I want to just recognize the Flagler County government in an unprecedented show of intergovernmental cooperation. They actually gave up one of their seats on the county commission so the mayor could sit on our Board of Directors. The county government itself is represented by Commissioner Melissa Holland, Mayor Robinson, the mayor of Bonnell is also a member of our board, and Bob Scroy is the gubernatorial appointee from St. John's County. Our mission at the council is to provide visionary leadership and coordinate between counties and governmental agencies to preserve and enhance the quality of Northeast Florida's natural, man-made, economic, and social environment. We have broad responsibilities under 19 different Florida statutes, with the bulk of our work divided into two major categories, one being planning and development, and the other one being emergency preparedness. Currently in planning and development areas, we're working very hard to establish a regional vision for all of Northeast Florida that hopefully will drive local elected, local government decisions on growth and development patterns. We continue to review your local government comprehensive plans for consistency with our strategic regional policy plan. We do manage the developments of regional impact process, and we've had some great experiences here in the city of Palm Coast in both of those over the last couple of years. And we do provide a lot of technical assistance to our local governments. In the area of emergency preparedness, we just wrapped up a statewide regional evacuation study, providing a state-of-the-art tool for not only local emergency management directors, but for the state of Florida to be able to use in response to natural or man-made disasters. We staff the Regional Domestic Security Task Force and do a great deal of work in domestic security and homeland security. We staff the Local Emergency Planning Committee, dealing with extremely hazardous and hazardous materials. We just completed a large amount of work throughout the state on interoperable communications to make sure that our responders can actually talk to one another in case of an emergency, and we provide exercise and training opportunities for our first responders throughout the state. In some of the other things that we do, we run a regional leadership academy, of which the mayor is a proud graduate. We do have, we brought together all the procurement agencies in Northeast Florida and created the Northeast Florida Procurement Association, and we staff the local coordinating boards for the transportation disadvantage, including Flagler County. Our regional awards program is now entering into its seventh year and is designed to recognize outstanding contributions to our regional community. The Regional Award for Excellence in Environmental Stewardship was created to recognize individuals, organizations, or specific projects whose primary focus is long-term protection, conservation, enhancement of the region's natural resources, or foster environmental stewardship in the region through demonstrated leadership, through the promotion of environmental awareness, through actions or specific programs. Last year, while the competition was stiff, one application stood out from the rest. On behalf of the Northeast Florida Regional Council Board of Directors, it's my great pleasure in presenting the Regional Award for Excellence in Stewardship to the city of Palm Coast for being gold-level, green local government, and for leading all cities in the state in garnering the highest grade in achieving this distinction. As a matter of fact, Palm Coast was the first city in Northeast Florida to receive this distinction. I've just been recently informed that the city of Jacksonville has also done so. It is a testament of leadership provided by the mayor and this council, and by the hard work and dedication of its staff, and specifically, of course, Mr. Landon, Ray Tyner, my good friend, Denise Bevan, Carol Burnett, Bill Butler, and I'm sure that there are many others of your staff who carry out this work on a daily basis. Sustainability is a way of life in Palm Coast, and the city government is leading by example. While regulation is important to protect the health, safety, and welfare, a wise man told me just this past Wednesday, and in this very building, inspire, don't require. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you.
Denise and Ray, why don't you accept the award on behalf of our city? Yeah.
Just one note, Mr. Mayor, if I might, about your staff. I've been a practicing planner in this state for 30 years. I've been at my council for 25, and these are some of the finest, hard-working public servants I've ever had the pleasure of working with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Meeker. My comment, Brian has been around, as he just said, for a long, long time, and it was under his, you know, leadership. I think you were the Assistant Executive Director at the time, or whatever, but I was dealing with things up at the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council. And he worked very hard to get the high-quality standards that we see throughout Palm Coast on projects like, well, it started with Hammock Dunes on the other side, and then ultimately then Sea Colony, and then Matanzas Shores, all DRIs, then the River Club DRI, which ultimately became Grand Haven. So his fingerprint is on a lot of projects that you see all over Flagler County, and it's been well-received and well-recognized.
Thank you, councilman. One of the things that Councilman Meeker didn't describe all is that I've been involved in Palm Coast since the day of the club, the Comprehensive Land use Plan, long before. I mean, I tell you, this, this community has come a tremendous, long way. And as I described the other day, the work that you've done on sustainability, for being such a young government, a lot of time would be spent in those 10 years simply trying to figure out how to govern, but this community has gone beyond governing and is leading, and that's truly impressive.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the club. I'm a lot younger than he is, and I wasn't there when the club was being generated, so...
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ray and Denise, thank you. Agenda item number four, resolution approving agreement between Flagler County, the city of Palm Coast, and Andrew Coleman, MD. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, city council is, per your direction, about 10 months ago, we started looking at ways to become more efficient in our providing service of not just fire, but EMS, emergency medical services. One of the ways you obviously can become more efficient is develop partnerships, or just work better together with some of the other partners providing the same service. In this case, Flagler County has a transport service, and so they really take the lead in EMS throughout the whole county, including Palm Coast. Our role is a first responder role to increase that, that level of service. We took that very seriously and have actually developed a number of new cooperative programs with the county. Some of those are not relevant to EMS, but it's relevant to the overall efforts of providing a more efficient service. Training, both fire and EMS, purchasing, a variety of just getting along better, coordinating better, that's then results in cost savings and a better level of service out in the community. One of the items that we knew was not going to be as easy as some of the others were was trying to develop a medical director program, so we had only one medical director. Our current system is that, well, first of all, everybody needs to realize that in order to have an EMS program, it has to be led by a MD or medical director, because your paramedics out in the field are actually have the ability to administer drugs, narcotics, provide basically the same type of services you'd have in an emergency room, it's just a portable emergency room, if you will. So both the county and the city EMS program had a medical director, it was two different directors. And then the, the emergency room at the hospital has a director of the emergency room. So if you had the displeasure of needing emergency medical services, there was a possibility within a very short period of time, you would be under the care of three different doctors. And, and so obviously trying to improve on that system was going to save everybody money, but also actually help coordinate the, the actual service. We were able to work out this agreement with the county and the director of our, of our local hospital, Dr. Coleman, so that Dr. Coleman would be the director of both the county and city EMS program. And that is what's in front of you today. It's actually an agreement, three-way agreement, with Dr. Coleman, the county, and the city all participating in this agreement. In essence, what it does for the city is Dr. Coleman becomes the medical director of our EMS program for a cost of, an annual cost of $20,000. We are currently paying our current director $24,000 a year, so there's, you see the savings. There was some confusion because of an extra five in the language in the draft, and that language has been taken out, so that the county will be paying $30,000. They have been paying in the range of $35,000 to $40,000. Their director is actually an employee, so there was cost plus benefit, so it's in that range. So Dr. Coleman, for the full service, for the two organizations, will, the contract is for $50,000 a year, with the full range of services, so we do not need another medical doctor for either the city or the county, saving the city and county tax dollars a total of, in the range of $8,000 to $10,000. And having the service more efficient, because now you only have one doctor giving orders. So it just makes good sense, it is cost-efficient, and everybody is working together to make this happy. I don't know that anybody disagrees with it. Our EMS people, you know, really liked working with Dr. Forsberg, and he should be recognized for putting in many years of, of service for us. My understanding, the medical director at the county, that their EMS staff really liked the services she provided, so this isn't anything about those two doctors, it's all about trying to do it right. And they, they understand that. I think they all enjoyed it, but they also understand why it makes sense. That is what is in front of you today. If I may add, one other thing is, the job is not finished. This is just kind of one cog in the wheel. We, we still have some other tasks that, to really save money, we need to coordinate better out in the field to make sure we're not duplicating services. Anytime you have first responders and then a different transport agency, it is very important that we try to work hard on making sure that we can reduce duplications, cost savings in today's world, that is the name of the game. So the day when money wasn't as big of an issue, you didn't have to work so hard on those efficiencies as we do today. So I just want to point out that, as you indicated, like I said, 10 months ago, we really do need to look at where the stations are, who's manning those stations, exactly how the service is being provided. And so don't want you to think this is the end of the task, there's more difficult tasks ahead of us, but this is a major positive step in the right direction. So with that, Chief Beadle is here to answer questions. We'd be happy to answer questions, or staff is ready. It's been a long process, and we're ready for, for action today, if you are.
Council questions?
I don't know, I think it's a great idea.
Seeing none, open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Four?
Good morning, Your Honor, Council. Is this amount...
Give us your name, please.
Bill McQuire. I live in Palm Coast. Is this amount you're going to approve or vote to approve on? Is this included in the budget as it stands, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll get an answer to your question. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. Come back to council. But first, Mr. Landon, is this a budgeted item?
The current director's budget, or, or cost, is in the budget, and that is $24,000. So this will actually, part, part year, about halfway through, this will be about $2,000 savings for the rest of this year, and then $4,000 for, for, for next year.
Okay. So it is a budgeted item?
Yes.
Additional council questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the consent agenda items five and six. Would anyone like to remove either of the consent agenda items?
I'd like to remove five.
Number five is removed. This relieves number six. Unless anyone wants to remove number six, is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Six?
It's approved.
In second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number five, a resolution approving a work order to connect consulting in the amount not to exceed $124,000 for evaluation and rehabilitation of well SW14. Mr. Meeker.
Nothing super huge here. This will be very short. At the workshop, we discussed whether there was any cost savings or benefits to going outside for some of the routine work. Richard, have we made any preliminary findings in that area yet?
No, we have not.
Okay. That's all I was wondering about, Mr. Mayor.
But you will be getting back to council with...
Yes, we will.
...cost-benefit analysis. Okay.
All right. I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
Well, sorry. We removed it from the agenda. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Five? Seeing none, approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. And now, Mr. Meeker.
Motion to approve the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. In an unprecedented display of brevity, this brings us to the end of the consent agenda and public participation. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Our, that, that little building that's going up on Sappus Point, are we going to get the same frontage like ABC and CVS is doing, or is that going to be just a parking lot that's going to face the roadway? Just curious about that, you know? If they, if they can do it at ABC, they could certainly do it where I live. Second, I would like to ask, if I'm giving you eight bucks, eight bucks a month to maintain a swale, why don't you come around and mow it? If, the way I understand it now, that part of, of the road where the swale is belongs to the city. If I'm going to mow that and keep that grass cut, I want to get paid for it.
And I bet you had eight dollars a month in mind.
Well, no. The same way you pay somebody to, to mow the lawn and mow the grass on, on the highways. If I'm going to mow your lawn on the swales, then I should be paid for it, or deducted from my eight bucks, eight bucks a month. It's your responsibility. I'm giving you eight dollars, $96 a year, and you only do my swale, what, once every 10 years? I got to get something back for my $96.
Thank you, Jack. Next speaker.
My name is Amy Bealman, and I am currently serving as the president of the Flagler Humane Society Board of Directors. I'm here today to discuss the issue of stray animals within the city of Palm Coast and how they now affect the relationship between the city and the Flagler Humane Society. Ordinance Number 829, 830 clearly states that the city is responsible for its public nuisance animals, its strays. Flagler Humane Society installed a new software system last October under the direction of Jeff Hale, our new director. We can finally track where all the animals come from. We get animals from, of course, animal control. We get them from residents that can no longer care for their pets. We call those surrenders. And we get animals from well-meaning, good-hearted citizens that find animals along the street and bring them to us directly. In the past six months, since we've been able to track where the animals come from, we've discovered that we have taken in over 500 of these strays from Palm Coast locations, these public nuisance animals. And here's our problem. Unless an animal is brought into us by the city's animal control, we don't get paid. We still have to treat the stray with medical attention, and housing, and care, and shots. And we have cared for over 500 of these animals in the last six months and not gotten paid. And we are asking you today to uphold your responsibility to the residents of Palm Coast and remit payment to us for the strays being delivered by Good Samaritans. There's a great deal of confusion out there in the community about who we are and how we survive. We are not a county facility or a municipal shelter. We are completely private. We are a nonprofit, and we have struggled intensely over the past four years. All we are asking for today is what's written in the ordinance. Please pay us for the citizen turn-ins of public nuisance animals. Code enforcement has refused our request. And if the city will not pay us, then we will have no other choice but to send a person that comes to the shelter with an animal directly to Palm Coast Animal Control. And if Palm Coast Animal Control does the intake, then we would be paid. We hate to turn away these people that bring us the strays. The citizens have some risk in carting the animals around, and it would make more sense if the city would remit the fees due to us. In conclusion, on behalf of the board, and the staff, and the volunteers, I want to thank the people of Palm Coast for their support over the last four years. We really wouldn't have survived without their generosity. The people and the families of this community have kept us alive. I also want to thank you this morning, councilman and mayor, for listening and for your consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you sit down, I have a question for you, if I may. Your tracking system...
Yes.
Do you track it by street address or by city? Because there are a number of areas that have a Palm Coast post office box that are not part of the city. Do you make that differentiation?
I believe we do, but may I call on the director, Jeff, to verify the answer to that? I know we have documentation, which we have sent in to code enforcement. Jeff?
Good morning, Mr. Hale.
Good morning. Our database allows us to track based on where they are living. So if there are Palm Coast resident, we are able to track that information. We understand that there are addresses in Palm Coast that are not actually the responsibility of the city, that are our responsibilities. We take that into account when we are providing figures, because we also bill for that with the county. So we want to make sure that invoices are going to the correct responsible party, whether it's the city or the county.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I'm, I would like to inquire about Bel Air and Whiteview Parkway. Now, Whiteview Parkway East, as if you take Bel Air going south, you, you head east on Whiteview Parkway, about a walkway, something where people could walk instead of walking in the roadway or on the grass. Are they going to start working on it? Are they going to work on it? What's the update on that? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Come back to council. But first, Mr. Landon, can you give us some insight on to the swale maintenance issue in terms of mowing? Is that city-owned property? Is that private property with a city easement, et cetera?
You're, you're going to open up a can of worms, because technically it's private property with an easement on it. But everybody reviews, refers to it as... But everybody refers to it as city right-of-way and therefore it's city property. It's an interesting legal issue. Fact of it is, is that people are responsible for maintaining the, all of the grass area up to the street. No matter who you want to call property, that's the responsibility as far as our ordinances are concerned. I don't, I mean, I've heard this issue. This is a very typical issue. Just so people realize, as a service that we do provide, that a lot of communities don't provide, is we mow the right-of-way in front of vacant property because there's nobody there to mow it. The idea is that, you know, if you are mowing your lawn, just, you know, mow out to the street. But that's the best answer I could give you, Mayor.
I'm confused. Is it a right-of-way or is it an easement over property owned by?
Is an easement a right-of-way?
I've always felt there was two distinctions that a right-of-way was owned by a governmental entity and an easement was a proprietary use given over private property.
And we will turn to our city attorney, who will enlighten us.
I wish Katie was here now.
Yeah. Where is she when I need her? Well, first of all, governments can receive rights-of-way through different mechanisms. Usually, there's a dedication. And that means that there's a dedication of fee simple, where the local government actually owns the dirt, actually owns in fee simple, completely, the whole pie, if you will. Sometimes, local governments can receive rights-of-way through receipt or dedication of less than the whole plate, less than the whole pie. That would be where there's easements. And the easements would be just for the specific use associated with the right-of-way. Now, here, we're talking about something that is not necessarily right-of-way. It's, in some circumstances, these swales may be located within easements, located within easements. Other times, and those easements would be for the utilities, for the swales, for the stormwater, for utilities like cables and pipes and things like that. Or these swales can be in the rights-of-way that were dedicated to the city. The difference is, is that, as your city manager indicated, there is, in our code of ordinances, the statement, the obligation of property owners to maintain the grass that is in front of their property that may be within the rights-of-way. We, on the other hand, charge eight dollars per property, single-family property, for the purpose and for the specific purpose, not of mowing it, but maintaining the swale from the standpoint that it continues to, and I'll defer to staff on exactly what that entails, but I think we all recognize, that's for the maintenance of the flow of stormwater from its source to the only where it collects. So the typical lawyer answer, but a lot, most right-of-ways are owned by local governments, free and complete. But there are many situations, and there may be situations in the city of Palm Coast, where the swales are located in easements, easements given to the city for the purpose of stormwater.
Yeah, my understanding is there could be easements between properties, where you could put utilities. It might be cable, it might be drainage, it might be whatever.
Sure, those two.
But out front, from the edge of pavement, fifteen feet up to the top of the slope, I thought was part of the city right-of-way. And so I think what you're saying is that we have an ordinance that requires people to maintain the grass all the way down to the edge of pavement within our own right-of-way.
Correct.
I think you'll find, however, that if you look at your deed, you own right out to the edge of pavement.
Well, it really depends, Mayor. As I indicated before, I would imagine in many of the newer subdivisions, you're going to find that the dedication of the rights-of-way, the road right-of-ways extend, there's a portion of that right-of-way, let's say it's thirty feet. The pavement may be twenty feet or it may be twenty-five feet. And so you have city-owned property that extends beyond the edge of the pavement. Perfect example of that is where you have a right-of-way where you have the pavement, the road right-of-way, the road pavement. Then you have the little strip of grass, and then you have a sidewalk. And then, on the edge of that sidewalk is the edge of the right-of-way. That's typical for newer subdivisions.
Newer.
Newer subdivisions. It's, a lot of the older subdivisions, and I'm not an expert on the difference between or what the majority of the city of Palm Coast is as far as that, a lot of the older subdivisions, I would imagine, here in Palm Coast, that you have a right-of-way that may be, say, thirty feet. You have a pavement which may be twenty feet wide, and I'm just pulling these numbers, these aren't specific. And then you have five feet on each side, which is unpaved, but it still is owned by the city. But I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. There could be many situations here in the city, and I can't speak to these gentlemen, you know, this one particular citizen, but there are some situations where likely you're going to have the swale, it's going to be located in an easement that was dedicated at the time of the development of that subdivision to the city, but not fee simple, but just an easement, an easement for the purpose. Each, you know, easements have different purposes. As Councilmember Meeker indicated, you'll have, the more common easements are those that are running between the lots. And those aren't, sometimes those can be for utilities, for cable, for electricity, but a lot of times, they'll also be for stormwater or for drainage between lots as well.
I started off my comment by saying that you open a can of worms when you get into, you know, who owns what when it comes to the right-of-way. And I've had this debate so many times in my career. From a practical standpoint, could you imagine having a city crew try to go out and mow six, eight-foot strip in all the different yards and different ways that people maintain it and how we got there? I mean, we would mow one day and then it'd be another week. I mean, it would be quite wild and crazy just
Well, you could always give them that one free mowing a year that we do for all the other lots.
Right, exactly. We could, you know, let it grow and then, I think it's, excuse me, Mr., it's usually twice a year.
Oh, sorry, twice a year.
So every six months
Sorry, I hate to mess that one up.
I mean, just from a practical standpoint, debating as to ownership is an interesting legal discussion I've had many times, but from a practical standpoint.
The other one, of course, is who owns the culvert?
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, that's the other big one.
So.
Let's take the third item, the second. Bel Air and Whiteview.
Bel Air, Whiteview is one of those path projects that we received the FDOT, the State Department of Transportation, grant for. It is, the contract's been awarded. It's a design-build. It's under design. Today, I don't have a schedule. If I did have a schedule, I never believe them anyways until they're actually out there doing it. But it is scheduled to start this year. I can tell you that. It should start and actually be completed this year. And that is from, that is a long white view to complete the path going west from where it ends now at Ravenwood all the way to White Mill and then up White Mill to Pine Lakes.
That's going in opposite direction.
I understand. And then east of Bel Air, all the way from Bel Air to, and I always forget the name of the last street in the P section,
Pine Grove.
So that people can come off of Pine Grove, hit this, and get to Bel Air. So includes that whole stretch.
Thank you. Now we come to the issue of the Humane Society. This has been an ongoing discussion for a number of years, and I'm not sure there's an easy, simple solution. Mr. Landon, where do we stand with the Humane Society and their contention, for want of a better word, that they are receiving a lot of Palm Coast animals via the Good Samaritan and that they are not being compensated for the care of those animals?
It's, Mayor, as you said, it's an ongoing debate. We have, the city, taken the position that we will pay the Humane Society, or pay them for every animal that our animal control officers actually take to the facility. The remaining portion of the animals that are brought to the facility, historically, since we started our own animal control program, we have not paid for. There was a time when we didn't, you know, it was, what, about three years ago? Prior to that, we didn't have an animal control program. In other words, Humane Society actually provided that whole program. This has saved us a lot of money. There's no question about it. And maybe that, our savings is to the detriment of the Humane Society, but our costs were going up sky-high on this program for animal control. And this was one of those where city council and the community mandated we get those costs under control. You know, it's, can you pay the Humane Society for providing a public service? Yes. Can you, and what we've said in the past, is it, is it a county-wide animal control program? It has been in the past. And should this be a county program and not individual cities program? There's that argument, too. There are a variety of things. I can tell you right now that there's different options. We've proposed some different often, options to Humane Society. It is a public policy issue. It's a matter of, are you willing to write a larger check to the Humane Society from tax dollars? That's really what the question is. I have one request, and I say it all the time. Do not tie it in to actual nose count, number of animals. This is how we get in a conflict usually with Humane Society because there is no way of verifying. Yeah, they can give us a list, and it says Palm Coast, but as we all know, you know, there are a lot of Palm Coast addresses of people that don't live in Palm Coast, and where'd they actually come from, and was it a family pet that they decided to give up, all those issues. It would, if you do want to write a larger check to the Humane Society, my request is that you just write a larger check and not try to have it be verifiable because we have no way of doing that, and it just causes a lot of conflicts. And that's always just been my request, if you want to, as a public policy, give them more money.
What's the amount per animal right now?
It depends on if you bring them in before or after three o'clock and what actually, whether they're euthanized or et cetera. But I think the, before three o'clock is forty-five dollars. After three o'clock, there's an additional surcharge for that. There can be some, you know, if they have to be quarantined, there's additional charges, et cetera. But the base rate is forty-five dollars.
So if I bump it up, some of you're talking about on five hundred animals a year, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, what I'd like to suggest is that, excuse me, these allergies are catching up to me. If Mr. Hale could schedule some time to meet with Mr. Abreu and Mrs. Grossman, manager, I'd be happy to sit in. I think we have to, because, I mean, from their perspective, they will accept surrenders of a, as I understand, and Mr. Hale, correct me if I'm wrong, if I want to surrender my pet, I bring my beloved pet in, say I can no longer care for it, you charge me for that. Do you not, or do you? Is there, is there a cost for a surrender?
Right now, it's a suggested donation.
Okay, all right. The simplest thing for the Humane Society would be simply say, sorry, we're not taking any dogs from Palm Coast. Call Animal Control. And that just brings more expense to us. We've got to send our people out. We've got the personnel costs, the vehicle costs, the time costs, and now we pay for the dog or cat. I think we have to find an equitable solution to this that protects the city interests, the city residents' interests, but also allows the Humane Society to continue providing the outstanding service that they do. So, Mr. Hale, if you'd be so kind, we'll get with you, you get with us, we'll try to do something because it's in our mutual best interest to resolve this. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Meeker. I agree with you. And I also agree with Jim's idea about writing a check, coming up with an equitable amount to help offset these costs, because what I'd hate to do, they have an alternative. You heard it. What you do is you say, tell you what, folks, since we can't get reimbursed for that animal, if you'll just drive over to City Hall and go into the front desk and ask for an animal control officer to come out, and you can transfer from the back of your car to their car, and then we will be paying for it. I mean, that's, they could take that position from policy. There's no sense fooling around with this kind of stuff. Let's just come to a reasonable figure, write them a check to help offset their costs and continue this worthwhile program in the city.
Mr. Lewis.
Well, I just have, I just have one concern, and I think I, when I met with Mr. Bealson, I believe his name is, I indicated to him that verification is quite important because a lot of people could bring things to animals to the Humane Society, and we could be paying for animals that really we shouldn't be paying for. So verification is quite important. I don't, you know, it's, one thing about giving away money, I'm stingy. I don't like to give away money. So I need something that will give me an incentive. I suggested to Mr. Bealson that perhaps when someone brings a pet or stray animal in, that they contact the city code enforcement before they accept the animal and build the city. And I do like to see it to have some role in that acceptance. So that was my suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Mormon, anything?
Nothing, sir.
All right, then, we'll meet and discuss. End of public participation. Discussion by city council.
About the landscaping on Cypress.
The building on Cypress Point Parkway.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The new building on Cypress Point Parkway.
It looks, I will tell you that I haven't seen the actual plans. It's another one where
Maybe Nestor knows.
I would doubt that Nestor's seen the plans, too, but you're welcome to come on up and answer. I can tell you that by looking at the construction, the parking lot is up front, is in the front. It's, in a lot of ways, for that type of lot, the only practical way. If you compare it to ABC Liquor, ABC Liquor, the front is actually the parking lot of the shopping center. That's really how you get to that. You cannot get to ABC Liquor from, directly from one of the streets and therefore creates a whole different design. It's interesting, I have to laugh out loud with Jack commenting about wanting it to look like the ABC Liquor, because during construction, we got beat up so bad about how, how do you let that building so close to the street, et cetera? There are people that like that urban-type feel of up close versus just a sea of asphalt with a parking lot in front. But in the case on Cypress Point, you don't have much option. I mean, you're not going to have retail businesses right up front and then the parking lot only in the back. And you can't orient the building towards the back unless you do something like an ours, where we have our city offices, but that's a whole different, unique site, too, that
It was planned that way.
Yeah, it's totally, totally different. So the parking is going to be in front. Is it going to look like a nice, it's like anything else. Right now, it looks like an ugly metal building. It will definitely look like Palm Coast because I know my staff well enough to know that it will have the nice landscaping, it will have the nice facade, and that when it's all finished, people will be very proud of it. Right, you know, there's always comments of what color do you like and that type of thing, but it will be, it will look like Palm Coast. In the meantime, it's an ugly construction site, and it is very unattractive. So give it a few months, and it will come alive and be a nice Palm Coast site. That's probably my best way to answer. And Jack, if you want to see what it looks like, talk to Nestor. Nestor will get you the elevations and site plan and be happy to show you exactly what it looks like.
I was trying to think of putting trees up in that.
Oh.
Well, we don't do trees in this town.
No, this, the question is, are we going to put trees?
Are you kidding me, Jack?
That's like saying this will be the only site. We don't require landscaping. No, I can assure you that they're moaning and groaning by somebody about the trees that we require, but yes, there will definitely be landscaping. I haven't seen it, but I can guarantee you, there will be nice landscaping.
Thank you. The discussion by city council matters a lot on the agenda. Mr. Mormon?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
Nothing here.
Of course. Actually, they're both quick. But Jim, when we hire this business development specialist, or we get our active program going on, will that person have experience in helping people set up franchise operations? The mayor and I were at a club meeting two weeks ago, and there were some, there was three items that came up. One of them that the person was talking about was having a person located within city government that was a business franchise development specialist. And when I was hearing that, in other words, if somebody came into the city offices and wanted to start a new business and needed help from our business development specialists from this new program that we're setting up, would we be able to guide them through setting up through setting up a, a new business that involved a franchise?
Okay, we're talking about the New Business Assistance Center, which, by the way, is moving along nicely. We're kind of tipping some people's lives upside down in City Hall and moving people around again to put that office together. The employee, the, the business assistant specialist, and that's not the right title, but they will actually not be a city employee. I want to confirm that, that they will be employed by the university system. And the, will they have franchise expertise? It's like hiring anybody else. They'll have business experience in helping business with different business plans. The key to it, in my mind, is that if they don't have that specific experience, that they would know where to go to get that experience. And this is part of the Small Business Development Center network in all of central Florida, which is all the Orlando area, Daytona Beach, et cetera. So there are definitely a network there that they can tap into for a variety of, of new business-type needs, because there are, you know, one size doesn't fit all.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing the program, you know, develop and blossom, and the more specific expertise we can provide these people, the better off I think we're going to be.
Yep. The, the people that have the expertise in this are the ones doing the hiring, and that was by design. This isn't intended to be a city position, because we really don't have that expertise in business. And so we're letting the people who do have the expertise take the lead. So that's why I don't have a direct, you know, answer for you, because we do get to meet them, we do get to, not veto, but, but have input into it, but it's kind of like the finalists, and just say hello to them and make sure that we get off on the right foot kind of in the process.
Unless, unless there's anything else on that one. I've got one more.
Can I speak to that for a second? Because it was my, it was my understanding when we agreed to hire this person at $50,000 a year, that, that person had the necessary expertise. I'm certified by Baruch College in, in New York to do this type thing. When I was with the ATC, getting to come off ATC, the, the president of ATC asked me to, to be their advisor, and I didn't do it, didn't want to do it, but, because I, I retired. So, so that person, to me, should have that experience, okay? Because I'm certified, he should be certified. That's all I'm saying.
And that is going to be one of the requirements, whether they have it when they're hired or they have the background, and that will be something they'll have to.
Or get, get the training.
Get the training right up front. Today's world, I think there are going to be, there's going to be some, and I've been told, some well-qualified candidates out there that they will be able to select from. So I'm excited, excited about the opportunities, but, and, and once again, you can't hire anybody that's going to have all the, the tools in the toolbox, but they're part of a, a regional network that, that it will be out there for them.
The last question I had was the condition of the Palm Coast Players Club. I was driving by it again the other day. There's dead trees that are hazards to people walking in the area, that have either fallen down or about to fall down. The netting is all in disarray. I, I would like to have the city manager contact the owner of the property and have them get that place brought back up to some kind of standard acceptable for the city of Palm Coast, because if, if our residents were allowed to allow their property to go into disrepair the way that place is going to disrepair, code enforcement would be all over them. So we could either send code enforcement out and let the bank know that we're going to start refining them or something. But that, that site needs some major fix-up and cleanup. It does not reflect well on the city. As you come over the bridge, welcome to Palm Coast, and by the way, look at this trash dud area over here on your left. So we need to do something about that, and Jim, I'd like you to contact the owner and make them do something.
Well, I, I will be happy to. I've actually spoke to the representative about it not very long ago, but it is something that I will ask Nester to, to handle and contact them, because saying hello is one thing, but saying hello without the, the teeth of code enforcement doesn't do us any good. So we will, we will contact them, because I've recently walked by it also, and just the tree debris, you might call it.
Right.
Needs to be cleaned up and some other things. I agree.
That's it. Thank you.
Discussion by city attorney, matters not on the agenda.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager, matters not on the agenda.
Yeah, first of all, let me start off with the, our windmill company that is looking at us. They have put up a wind meter, if you will, little, you know, one of those little weather stations, and were, got response recently that they were pleased with the results, better than they expected.
Over this last weekend, everything was blowing this last week.
Yeah, so, we, we tell them that's the way it is. No. So they have indicated they're interested in coming in and talking to us about a pilot program, actually at our wastewater treatment facility, where they are willing to put in a test site there and talk to us about how we would participate, et cetera. Once again, we are trying to not have this be just a test facility, but if this thing, this company and this product takes off, we are looking to be in the running for a, a place to have it manufactured. So developing this relationship is very, very positive. They, I believe, are also working with the county for one, with one of their ponds. They found a pond south of the airport on county property that they liked the idea for their water vessel. It's a floating vessel that has windmills on it as a test site, too. So that, I have not heard recently, but that may work.
Gore Lake?
No, not Gore Lake. It's a, it's a stormwater pond south of, of the airport. So I thought that was, that's another one of those kind of good news moving forward, but no guarantees at this point. Kind of nice to have a company who is, doesn't mind us talking about it publicly. They kind of like people to know that they're working on alternative energy. The other thing I would like to report on, of course, Rockin' Rib Fest, which was two weekends ago, another huge success. I mean, the comments we've been receiving on Facebook and participants went extremely well. Very, very pleased with the results. Everybody wants to know what the numbers are and the dollars, and, you know, it's one of those things where there's vendors involved, and I can give you preliminary numbers, but they're never right, so should have final numbers sometime soon. But I just think it was one of those events, a lot of people put a lot of effort into it, and the community really seemed to appreciate it. Next is this coming weekend, Saturday is our Easter egg hunt. I get a kick out of Easter egg hunts, you know, you throw out a bunch of plastic eggs and call it Easter egg hunt, but the little kids sure get to have fun. And that's this Saturday at Central Park at, at 11:00 a.m. And then the next larger event is Arbor Day. Arbor Day is the first Saturday of May, and this year, we actually have a 5K run and a fun run, a fun walk, and we'll, you know, once again, give away free trees. We're trying to coordinate that better. It's, people show up, you know, they wait in line all night long. No, that's an exaggeration, but when we get there, they were sitting there waiting in line. We're, we're trying to coordinate that a little better, so we don't have that frenzy at the, at the very beginning. So there will be some changes, but still giving out the trees and still have the butterfly release and all that. So a couple of more positive events. Also, as a result of the, the recognition of things like our half marathon and the 5K runs we have here, et cetera, I've been told that we have landed a triathlon for, for this fall, which will bring in additional athletes into town, and that will be something new. But none of, none of those events would be very consistent with people coming into town and enjoying Palm Coast and the great outdoors and that, the athletics. Also, we are working with the local lacrosse and soccer organizations on a program to try to assure more tournaments coming to town. The large lacrosse tournament, which is 50 teams, represents over 1,000 players. On average, they say they bring two and a half people for every player. So, you know, you're talking about, let's say, 30, 3,500, 4,000, four, maybe 4,000-plus individuals coming into town. But they do need eight, what they call high-quality fields, and we only have four out at Indian Trail Sports Complex. We're working with the school district and TDC and their grant dollars to, to, and you'll see that come your way sometimes soon, to try and make those improvements for both soccer and lacrosse, because those are, those tournaments are huge for the economy and also our local, local teams. And so us traveling all the time, having people come here, so that's very consistent we're talking about. It's my understanding we've landed a gymnastics tournament, or a, not tournament, meet for a weekend in October.
I don't need to build a gymnasium for that.
No, no, this is, this is what's cool about this, is the school district is working with us, so, you know, they're helping with fields and teams. You know, I read in the newspaper that the state or regional color guard competition was held here in Palm Coast. I mean, you know, those things are, are important with all the.
Couldn't get into the McDonald's at Town Center that day.
Exactly. You know, and, and not just McDonald's, but some of the others. And so, you know, it doesn't seem, but also the cool thing is, is our families don't have to get in the car and go and have that expense, too. So we're working harder and harder at the Chamber and the TDC. This is a focus they're having to try to help our local economy. So it's another one of those, it's part of our Prosperity 2021 efforts, and it's nice to see everybody kind of come together to make these things happen, these events happen. And I think it's a good reflection on the community, very positive comments for those visitors that do come into town. So just wanted to report on a lot of work. A lot of staff time goes into this, but I think the, the economic benefits in the communities were all worth that work. So, Mayor, that's all I have for today.
Just, just one final comment. As, as council knows, Palm Coast was able to host the meeting this month for the Florida Inland Navigation District. I want to extend my congratulations to Tom Chiaffi and Chef Karen. They did a marvelous job on the reception, and I know the council was there. I want to report that the business meeting Saturday morning, the number of comments from commissioners, and understand that these people range from Nassau County to Miami Dade, there are 12 commissioners from, from the entire east coast of Florida, were very, very, very positively impressed with Palm Coast. They thought waterfront park, which they had helped fund, was, was magnificent. One of the commissioners, in fact, was on her way back from Tallahassee, and rather than going all the way down south, she just stopped and stayed in Palm Coast for two days in anticipation of meeting. And she was telling me that she had the opportunity to drive around, and like so many people, all she knew about Palm Coast was a blue water tower on 95. But in the two days, she said she drove around, drove through Town Center, drove through our residential streets, drove, drove through our shopping centers, was just extraordinarily impressed with Palm Coast. So, folks, you made a big hit with the Florida Inland Navigation District.
And Mayor, thanks for the invitation to have us join you. It was a lot of fun, and I got to say, the golf course cooking staff, those were the best crab cakes I've ever had in my life.
Aren't they great? Mayor, Brian Teepel being here from Northeast Regional last week, and you welcomed them here. I forgot, they were, had their regional leadership academy and brought that group to Palm Coast, and we hosted that group, and they were very, had a lot of very positive comments. You know, we're trying to get that word out and bring more people in, and, and as we bring in more groups, then they will hopefully bring some more groups in. So it's truly working quite well, and, and we've got a lot to offer, and I think that's, we just got to get the word out so that people come in and enjoy it.
Apparently Brian liked my comment about inspire, don't require.
Yes, yes.
All right. If there's nothing else, Mr. Meeker.
Let's adjourn the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for your participation.
John?